The advisory committee of the Energy Community. The members of the advisory committee, there are five members. And all the five members are here and representing this advisory committee. Now, as a first step, we are now collecting the names of those who are representing, on one hand, Bosnian Herzegovina and also possible interveners, and on the other hand, the Energy Community Secretariat. Now, this is a public hearing, and therefore we received a list of several names. And I have to say that those who do not represent and do not speak in this hearing are assumed as participants of this public hearing. But we first start with the representatives of Bosnian Herzegovina. And I would like to ask those who will speak on behalf of Bosnian Herzegovina to present themselves and to show the camera. And then afterwards, when you're not speaking, you can switch the camera off. So I start with the representatives of Bosnian Herzegovina. And in the meantime, we also as members of the advisory committee, we switch our camera off. Who is representing Bosnian Herzegovina?
Honorable President, dear participants, representatives of the secretariat and of the advisory committee, thank you very much for this introduction. My name is Bogdan Getic. I act as legal counsel of Bosnian Elektroprivrda Beja, together with Mr. Maric and his team, whom you can see also on the window, the three of them. We are the current legal team, as of, very recent in this case. In addition to myself, we have representatives of Copenhagen Economics, who are part of the defense team. Adina, yeah, just raise her hand. And we have all the representatives of the Council on State Aid Control, which is the state aid authority of Bosnia. I'm just looking for them with the camera, frankly, I'm not sure that I can see them.
Now, my question is, since you said you are representing Elektroprivrda Bosnian Herzegovina, you're not representing the contracting party. So you're not representing Bosnian Herzegovina?
Let's put it this way, it's complex. But for the points that we have authority only to speak on behalf of Elektroprivrda Beja, we will underline that as we did in the correspondence so far.
Okay, so you are only having authority of the intervener. And maybe you mentioned Mr. Maric. And you mentioned also a representative from Copenhagen Institute. Please, would you state your name, yes?
Yes, good morning. This is Adina Klaich. Yes, I'm director of Copenhagen Economics.
Okay, thank you. So I come back to the representative of the contracting party of Bosnian Herzegovina. Who is representing Bosnian Herzegovina in this public hearing? We were corresponding with Mrs. Knasevic. She's not present?
I'm present.
Oh, yes, you are, okay. Hello, you are representing Bosnian Herzegovina?
In our previous correspondence...
Yes?
I put all members of the team of Bosnian Herzegovina. And I put the names of the today's speaker. As your assistant, Mrs. Josefina asked. He asked for maximum three members of the team that would be speakers for today's meeting. All the other participants of the team would be possible interveners. But all of members from my emails are members of the team.
Yes, I received this email. And this email is mentioning you not as a speaker, but as representing the Ministry of Foreign Trade and Economic Relations of Bosnian Herzegovina. So we have you as representative of the contracting party. And then I also have on this list Mr. Risticz from the State Aid Council. Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Risticz.
Mr. Risticz, are you here? Can you show, just switch on the camera for a moment?
Honorable President, if I may intervene. I just managed to get in touch with Mr. Risticz. He's having some technical challenges, but he should be present. I believe that he's at the venue of Elektroprivrda, because they had the best equipment to join.
Okay.
But let's, if you don't mind, let's bear just a couple of minutes for him.
Okay. So to sum up, we have Mr. Getic.
We had some interruptions here inside the EDDI. So we couldn't hear you. Could you repeat the last sentence or clarify?
I have to say, I'm afraid I haven't understand anything what was said right now. Who was this? Was this Mr. Risticz?
Okay, just the last sentences. We couldn't hear you in the EDDI in Sarajevo. So can we have a break until we resolve some of the technical issues? Because we couldn't...
Okay, apparently there are some technical issues. Maybe in the meantime, you can try to solve these technical issues. We are still at the stage that we have to find out who is representing the contracting party and the intervener. But we have the list now with then Mr. Risticz, we have Mr. Getic, we have Mrs. Klaichi and Mrs. Knasevic. Now, all the other names we have on our list, we assume that these are, let's say, part of the public since they are not formally representing the contracting party.
Apologies for interruption. Apologies again for interruption. But here in Sarajevo, in the offices of EDDI, we're having some technical issues. So could we have a break until we resolve that, please? We cannot hear you.
I'm afraid I do not know who are you. Can you give me the information, who are you?
I'm speaking to representatives of EDDI, in particular Mr. Senad Talcic and the Council for the State Aid here. We are having some technical problems and cannot hear you.
You are the representative of the State Aid Council, right?
I'm the interpreter speaking on your behalf. So can we have just a small break, about 10 minutes, until we resolve these technical issues? We have some technical problems here.
Okay. I understand that there are some technical problems. We have to break. We stay here online, we all stay here online. And we try that the colleagues solve this problem so that the representatives from the State Aid Council can participate.
Okay, thank you. I hope that you can...
We stay here, we stay here for five minutes and you try to solve the problem. You can... For technical reasons, we stopped for five minutes, but we stay online. But you can switch off your microphones and also the video. So was it possible to solve the technical problems? Hello, can we hear Mr. Risticz now from the State Aid Council? Hello?
I am here, Veritza, I can hear you.
Okay. Maybe all the others cannot hear me. Hello, I'm back again. Was it possible to solve the technical problems in order to get in Mr. Risticz from the State Aid Council? But... I will continue now with the representatives of the Energy Community Secretariat. And I'm asking now, who is the representative of the Energy Community Secretariat?
Good morning, honorable president and members of the advisory committee and distinguished representatives of Bosnian Herzegovina. The Energy Community Secretariat in today's hearing will be represented by me, that's Dirk Buschle, Mari Therese Richter, two colleagues from Oxera Consulting, that's Simon Jarak and Nicole Robbins, as well as our colleague Rosetta Karova in the secretariat's room in Vienna. And Mr. Dimitris Valindas of Shepherd Mahrens is there to answer questions if any, but will not plead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buschle. Okay, what I have to add also is that we record this public hearing because it's easier to have the minutes and to prepare the minutes of this public hearing. Now, in the meanwhile, I'm asking again, is it possible for Mr. Risticz now to participate? Okay, so apparently Mr. Risticz is not attending the meeting yet. Now we continue. And first of all, we received several documents. But I should start by saying that the case relates to a state aid decision. Because the secretariat of the Energy Community seeks a decision from the Ministerial Council by adopting and maintaining in force a state aid decision of the Council of Bosnia and Herzegovina of the 23rd of July 2018, deciding that a guarantee issued by the Federation of Bosnia and Herzegovina in favor of the export-import bank of China to secure loan of the public utility Elektroprivrda Bosnian Herzegovina does not constitute state aid within the meaning of Article 18, Paragraph 1, C of the treaty. And therefore Bosnia and Herzegovina, according to the Energy Community Secretariat, fails to fulfill its obligations under Article 18 of the treaty. Now, in this case, our rapporteur is Professor Riley. And we will have, and Professor Riley will have several questions. And these questions, at first point, they relate to procedural issues. Yesterday, we received several letters, on one hand, from the contracting party, from Bosnian Herzegovina, but also from Elektroprivrda Bosnian Herzegovina. And these letters ask for deferring this public hearing. And also other points were mentioned in this letter or reasoning was mentioned in this letter. And therefore, what we are doing right now is to find first answers to certain procedural questions, especially when it comes to the economic reports. And therefore, I would like to ask Professor Riley to ask these questions in order to get answers to these procedural questions. Please, Professor Riley.
Thank you very much. I think where we have to start here is the question of the utilization of the economic reports. So we looked at the case file. There is no reference to the Copenhagen Economics Report, as far as I can see in any of the documentation. And there is no reference to the Oxera Economics Report. I am unclear whether the Oxera Economic Report exists. My first question is, why, and this is to the secretariat, is why we have not got a copy of the Copenhagen Economics Report in the case file? I think I've got to start there. And second question is, is there actually an Oxera Economics Report?
So who is answering, giving an answer to this question? I would like first ask the representative of the Energy Community Secretariat, Mr. Buschle.
Thank you very much, honorable member of the advisory committee. I will start. Colleagues in the secretariat may follow up. The economic report is, at least from the secretariat's side, a response and, as we believe, a diligent way to prepare for this meeting. We noticed that Bosnian Herzegovina have actually contracted economic expertise on questions that are being discussed in the context of this procedure and wanted to be prepared for this hearing as well, especially as we saw that the colleagues of Copenhagen Economics were also nominated for this hearing. The Copenhagen Economics Report is something that Bosnian Herzegovina, the contracting party concerned and the other party in this case, have requested. We have sent our recent requests to the Ministerial Council already more than four months ago. Bosnian Herzegovina has not sent a reply to that request, as it is envisaged by the rules of procedure, and thus has not submitted this report so that it could be made part of the case file. The Oxera Report, on the other hand, does not yet exist. It is, we don't have that report yet. We only invited colleagues from Oxera, who have the time to familiarize themselves with the case, to be available to answer questions of an economic nature, to the extent they are being discussed and they are being raised here at the hearing today. And for the sake of completeness, I would also ask the case handler, Mari Therese Richter, maybe to briefly compliment me.
Thank you and good morning. Just one more sentence, probably. Neither the Copenhagen Economics Report, as has been pointed out, is part of the case file. If it will be part of the case file, submitted officially by the party to the case, then we would be happy to reply to those arguments. As it stands, we have been, the Copenhagen Economics Report has been submitted to us. However, we see that it has been commissioned by Elektroprivrda, which is also not a party to this case, but only the beneficiary of the guarantee issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm calling on the representatives of Bosnian Herzegovina. First, Mrs. Knasevic, do you want to add something? Or is it anything you want to add?
I would like to give the floor, Mr. Getic.
Okay, Mr. Getic, please.
Thank you kindly, honorable president. And Professor Riley, thank you very much for those questions. I mean, that's exactly what we were quite concerned about. Because as I would like to note, I mean, just from the statements now made by the secretariat, it's quite evident the level of contradictions in their statements. Because I've jotted down the beginning of the secretariat's opening line, saying that the report, the Oxera Report and its procurement was a diligent way to prepare for this meeting. That's exactly our point. That for a public hearing, where we need to discuss all of the facts and law in this specific case of such magnitude and importance for the contracting party and the beneficiary, I mean diligent preparation is exactly key. Which also means that A, the secretariat gets its report, gets quite acquainted with its report, and we get a chance to also get acquainted, ask for clarification, and only then altogether proceed to a hearing. I mean, this is just the normal way under the Aki, as you would do any state aid case in Brussels. On top of that, if I may add, we strongly disagree with now the secretariat's interpretation how the Copenhagen Report is apparently not part of the case file. Because when we asked for access to the case file, one of the emails that were part of the case file contained the Copenhagen Report. And we're happy now to submit this to the minutes. So, you know, the secretariat cannot at one point deem the Copenhagen Report as part of the case file, but then legally, when it doesn't suit them, think that it's not part of the case file. On top of that, if I may add, it's not only that the secretariat recognized Copenhagen's report, they actually sent extensive questions during the summer of 2020. When Bosnia was hit by severe COVID-19 measures, the Bosnian government and Elektroprivrda were actually able to organize and indeed Copenhagen Economics to provide detailed answers to the questions posed by the secretariat, which were never followed up. This is why we were completely shocked when we did the access to the case file to learn that all of a sudden now, they're procuring an Oxera Report that nobody knew about. And we realized that only on October 6th. And this is the key reason why we, in full honesty and good faith, wanted to ask for a postponement of hearing. We actually managed, although we got only, almost 15 minutes before this hearing, the response of the secretariat regarding to our request for postponement. But, you know, based on what, on our brief analysis, it appears that the secretariat is alleging that we're trying to evade the proceedings and that this is essentially a procedural gimmick. I would strongly have to oppose that contention. I mean, we realized that there is a report that nobody knows about and nobody knows of its content only on October 6th. This is far from due process. Thank you.
Before I hand over to Professor Riley, and I'm sure he has additional questions, my question is now, as far as I understand, the Copenhagen Report is not part of the file yet. At least we, as members of the advisory committee, we do not know this is the Copenhagen Report. Now, my question is, now, I understand that the Copenhagen Report was produced for Bosnian Herzegovina or for the intervener, for Elektroprivrda Bosnian Herzegovina. My question is, when was the Copenhagen Report made? And what happened to the Copenhagen Report? Was it sent to the secretariat? And then additional question is, there was a mediation procedure, which was in parallel to this procedure, at least last year. Was this Copenhagen Report also part of this mediation procedure? Or was it outside of this mediation procedure?
May I, honorable? Thank you very much. Actually, what you just mentioned is exactly what we were trying to point out. We thought, and it was our impression, that the advisory committee was also kept in the dark about the whole economic analysis. And actually, thank you just for confirming that you didn't have access to the Copenhagen Report. Now, to answer to your question on how this came to be, this was a report that was procured by Elektroprivrda Beja. Procured since that they were the ones who paid for it. The reason why it wasn't done maybe as quickly as needed last year is that Elektroprivrda has been harmonizing in Bosnia with the EU Aki on public procurement. So for this kind of an economic analysis, unlike the secretariat, they had to procure it and that took months. The secretariat was duly notified of all of this and we have written correspondence. What is more, when the report was already finalized, it was as such recognized by the Bosnian... it was as such recognized by the Bosnian government. And it was the Bosnian government. So again, the secretariat made a point which is incorrect. The Bosnian government was the one who officially submitted this report as a contracting party, not as the beneficiary. The formal report was submitted to the secretariat on July 13, 2020, by the minister. And it was, and it was then recognized by the secretariat on July 17. We have all of this correspondence and we will happily follow up after this hearing with the advisory committee so that you can also have access to this. What is more, after this in July, the secretariat followed up with detailed questions. When I say detailed questions, I mean questions that required Copenhagen Economics weeks to respond to and provide very detailed answers. It's almost a lonely report. Now, going back also, Honorable President, to your question about why and when, why was not this done during the mediation? Well, as I said, the dates are different. The mediation occurred in 2019, while the report, while Copenhagen was only hired in 2020 and the report was done in July 2020. One of the reasons, in addition to the whole public procurement situation, was of course COVID-19. That really slowed down, slowed down things with, you know, the whole public procurement process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That means the Copenhagen Report was sent to the Energy Community Secretariat or was finalized in July and sent or accepted or received by the, by the secretariat on July 17. This was after the recent request was issued, which took place on the 26th of June. Please.
Thank you, President. Just one, one addition to that. That's exactly why the contracting party, in its reply to the reasoned response, asked for a delay because of the public procurement process. It couldn't reply within the timeframe for completely justified reasons, legally justified. They couldn't do the procurement and this was all happening in COVID-19 times, when everybody, including even DG Competition, made the furrows of its deadline, under the Aki. I just want to clarify this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Burschle, do you want to add something?
Yes, thanks a lot, Honorable President. I think we see again this maneuvering of the defendant in this case, which has started very recently and evidently is a sign of desperation because they have started their preparation for this case, evidently way too late. I would like just to say in this respect, if it was, if Bosnia and Herzegovina wanted to make this Copenhagen Economics Report part of the case file, it would have been up to them to do it. There are clear procedural rules in our dispute settlement procedures, which stipulate that the secretariat is to send a reasoned request within a certain deadline, which we did. And then there are two months for the parties concerned to submit a reply, which Bosnia and Herzegovina didn't. In between, this Copenhagen Economics Report was commissioned, not only commissioned, but also received. So it was definitely up to Bosnia and Herzegovina and eventually the intervener to introduce that into the case file and now try to blame the secretariat, would be to turn the things upside down. And I would also like to say, and this for the record, that it's not possible now just to send this to the advisory committee or anybody else after the meeting because we would breach precisely these rules that I was talking about. There is a deadline and a timeline for replies with a good reason. And if this has not been respected, for whatever internal reasons the country has, which according to well-established case law do not matter in this respect, you cannot just send additional arguments or additional reports later as you see fit. Thank you.
Now I hand over to Professor Riley for additional questions.
Yes.
Please unmute your microphone.
Yeah, I think I have. It's working now. I am, yes, I have a number of points here. What we're getting from the Bosnia and Herzegovina side is a, two points really. One is they're saying, as I understand it, the file, the document was sent as part of the, on behalf of the state and it was received by the secretariat within the time period under the, under the rules of procedure. Is that correct? That is my first question. The second question I've got is this. We are now faced with a quite difficult situation because you, we have got an economics report also that we have not seen. And we're also then, which is in apparent defense of the Bosnia and Herzegovina position. And at the same time, we have got a series of economic experts from OXERA who are proposing to give testimony. And one of the questions that I clearly am struggling with here is the, if you like, the rights between the parties, whereby potentially, we're going to be in a situation where the secretariat is able to make arguments in relation to the economic issues with external economic support. Would the, the economics report of the, of the state is not going to be able to be in play when it has already been received? So you can see, this is, this is, I think, the rights issues which are concerning the advisory committee. So perhaps you were able to respond to that. Thank you.
If I may, thank you very much, Professor Riley. You don't mind or?
Yes, please. Please go ahead, Mr. Getic.
Thank you very much. So first of all, I would again need to, you know, reiterate that the fact that the secretariat shared this report with us when we were doing the access to file is a clear legal, clear legal, not implicit, but explicit recognition that it's part of the case file. Even if there were any preclusions under the rules of procedure, the secretariat by its own action cured them. And I still don't believe that there were any. But I'm just trying. So I think that we are debating a non-issue at this point. It's part of the case file. What is more, the secretariat spent months reviewing it and sending detailed follow-up questions. So it's a lot more, Professor, than just the distribution of our procedural rights. It's a core question of equality of arms, which is a key principle under the Aki, especially in competition cases. Because one side, and it's the prosecutor here, who had months to get into the nitty-gritty details of our economic defense, while we don't have a clue what even the testimony of their experts will be and no time to prepare. I mean, we learned about the existence of their experts only on October 6th. It's a flagrant violation of due process. Thank you.
Mr. Burschle?
Professor Riley, honorable member of the advisory committee, we evidently strongly disagree with this. And maybe I would have to remind the council of Elektro Privrada once again of the rules here. We distinguish between a case file, which includes all the documents related to the case, and procedural rules. In terms of procedural rules, the secretariat cannot, just because after sending the reasoned request, it received additional documents, send this out to everybody. Not even, you know, the circle of those who could have theoretically access to the case file is very, very large. So there is no automatic sending out of any new document that relates to this case. Under the rules, it is clearly the opportunity and also the responsibility of the originator of a new document to include it into the procedure. And that was in this case, Elektro Privrada or Bosnia and Herzegovina. You decided not to do that and we cannot rectify this shortcoming. Yes, evidently we have read the report, but there is no procedural rule that would even allow us to forward this to anybody. That was your task, your responsibility. You had time to do that because the deadline expired for reply, expired only later and you chose not to do. When we decided to also ask economic experts to look into the file, and I reiterate that there is no report that could be shared yet in the case file, because that report does not exist yet. When we asked to do that, we did it precisely for the reasons of equality of arms. We knew that you would like to discuss economic issues, economic questions for which you have contracted external expertise and we wanted to be prepared for that. Nothing else and I don't see any reason why this should affect this case at all. But I would also hand over to the case handler, Mrs. Richter, who has also granted you, and again, very diligently, access to the case file, including some of the material that was sent by yourself in the very last minute. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to just reiterate that I think we should come back to the, to the task that we are following up here today. This is the hearing before the advisory committee, which should give an opinion to assist the ministerial council to make a decision based upon the documents that have been submitted to the ministerial council. There is a follow, there are specific documents that have been submitted, opening letter, reply, eventual replies, which are not the case here, reasoned opinion, reasoned request. This is what is the basis of the decision of the ministerial council and this is the basis of your opinion of the advisory committee, which is here to hear the arguments brought forward in an oral way and also to ask additional questions if they may have. I would also like to proceed with this task because I think irrespective of economic expertise, we have good arguments on a legal basis on which this case can be, can be decided in, in the way, in which the ministerial council will find that Bosnia and Herzegovina has breached Article 18. Already for legal reasons, based on the conditions that the permission notice and guarantees provides, this case will be easy to decide. We do not actually need the additional economic expertise because criteria already on a legal basis are not fulfilled.
Mr. President, can I ask a question? Very interesting, a member of the.
Professor Dristenjak. Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask the parties, if I understand correctly, so that after the reasoned request, then this Copenhagen Report was sent on the 14th of July. So that this was according to the rule of procedure, according to the Article 31, in the two months. But if I understand correctly, the secretariat answered that this was not this official reply according to the rule of procedures. And actually, the party Bosnia and Herzegovina also, how to say, you didn't say that this was a reply according to the Article 31. So if there is not a reply, then it's actually not the part of the procedure. I would understand then in this direction. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Getic. Could you please give an answer to the question of Vice President Dristenjak?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Honorable President, Honorable Vice President. In short, first of all, the secretariat was duly notified that due to COVID-19 and public procurement reasons, there was a delay. This is a delay that, under any procedure, including the Aki, which is a primary source of law under the community treaty, instead of the rules which are a secondary source of law. The Aki has primacy and I need to underline this. It was more than enough to justify that the delay with submitting the report is completely in line with the law. On top of that, even notwithstanding the delay, the report was still submitted within the deadlines under the rules. And on top of that, under the Aki, and I think we should not lose point of this, the key job of the investigation is to seek the truth. That's the key principle of fairness. What we're hearing now from the secretariat is a very, well, limited argument about form over substance.
One additional question from my side, in addition to what was asked by Professor Dristenjak. So to clarify this, you did not say that this report is an answer to the reasoned request. Is that right? So there was no specification of this is an answer to the reasoned request, second, first question. And for clarification, since this was asked by Professor Dristenjak. And the second is, did you ask to extend the timeframe for an answer to the reasoned request?
Thank you, Honorable President. Yes, we did. In the reply to the reasoned request, the contracting party exactly said that, that they are procuring an economics report and that they will be able to provide additional details when the report is procured, with explaining why the report was not ready at the time of sending the request. So in short, it's a positive answer to both your questions. And if I may add, when we're talking about raising objections, what I would like to say is something very peculiar and interesting and actually a show of procedural maneuvering to call the secretariat, is that this is the first time that the secretariat raised this procedural objection. We've never heard so far, from the moment that the Copenhagen Report was submitted, that it was inadmissible. So this is the first time that we're even discussing the inadmissibility criteria. And if I may add, it's very interesting that they first discussed the report in detail, sent follow-up questions, spent months for doing that. And only now, when they actually hired counter witnesses and started procuring a report only three days before a hearing, now we're hearing inadmissibility objections. This whole, you know, procedural reaction by the secretariat plainly shows what we have been talking the whole time about and that is a significant breach of due process. And if I may add, this is the exact reason why not only us, but the European Commission, in its non-paper that we also disclosed with you yesterday, although it's in the public domain, believes that it has authority and primacy over state aid cases with association countries. Because something like this would never happen before the European Commission. Thank you.
Coming back to the question of Vice President Dristenjak, does one of the representatives of the secretariat wants to give an answer or comment on this?
Maybe again, both actually. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, sorry for, indeed paying respect to the forms. They do matter, we believe, precisely because this should be a procedure on the rule of law. And if one party decides not to reply to a reasoned request, that's indeed up to them. And I would only like to reiterate that indeed we did not receive a reply. We got this as an attachment to a letter which was sent in July. This is Richter can explain a bit more in detail.
Hello? Did we, we lost Mr. Burschle? Or was it only me who lost Mr. Burschle? Only me, okay. Mrs. Richter, please go ahead.
No, just to say, Mr. Burschle has pointed out that the Copenhagen Economics Report has not been submitted as a reply to the reasoned request, as indicated by. not been submitted as a reply to the reasoned request, as indicated by Professor Dristenjak. The email of 17th of July reads, ladies and gentlemen, please find the documents in the attachment. One of these documents says, we enclose the document, economic assessment, and so on. The document was prepared by the independent consultant Copenhagen Economics, respectfully the minister. Thank you.
Professor Dristenjak, do you want to ask an additional question for clarification? No? Anybody else from the advisory committee, apart from Professor Riley, who wants to ask questions? No, then I would hand over to Professor Riley, whether he has additional questions or... Yes, please. Please unmute.
I think the representative of the utility company wants to add something. He's got his hand up. I think I'll listen to what he's got to say and then I'll come in, okay?
Mr. Gasic, please. Go ahead.
You kindly. Well, I must confess and I do apologize for maybe a little bit of taking the time with this whole exercise, but I wanted purposely to raise only this now so that you can show, so that I can show exactly what we were meaning of the behavior and lack of respect for the Aki in competition and state aid matters by the secretariat. Namely, as you know, when you have an MEOP analysis, and this is settled, established ECJ law, I mean, the EDF case that the Grand Chamber issued back in 2012 said that when an MEOP analysis, and that's the key point of the case, it always has to be done by the Commission or in this case by the secretariat. They cannot shift the burden of proof on the defendant. Everything that you have been listening now exactly shows what they've been doing, that there was no economic analysis, their own economists have been hired, only now, there's no report of their own, there's actually no economic justification of their own. They believe that this is a legalese case that they can easily solve, to quote the case handler, while the established ECJ case law specifically mandates that the burden of proof in an MEOP analysis is on the secretariat in this case. So in addition to everything that we were discussing and everything that I mentioned was plainly procedural, in this specific case, you have a mixture of substantive and procedural requirements under the Aki, which requires the secretariat to do their work, and they haven't, and they have now plainly, before all of you, debated this for 20 minutes. Thank you.
Professor Riley, please. Please unmute.
Mr. Buschle wants to come back. I think we should let him come back. Okay.
Thanks. And very, very briefly, because we do hope we get into these legal arguments that we announced, we firmly believe, and I can only reiterate what Mrs. Richter has already said, we firmly believe this is a case that can and should be decided on legal grounds. So this argument about the burden of proof is beside the point. I would like to reiterate what is in front of us is a decision by the State Aid Council of Bosnia and Herzegovina. And our claim is that this decision is legally flawed. It was Bosnia and Herzegovina who decided to extend the argumentation to the economic side, even though not formally. We just wanted to prepare to such discussion, but we are more than happy to disregard all the external economic analysis from both sides and go into, directly into the law because we are, we are very much aware that this is a case where an authority, the conduct of which is attributable to Bosnia and Herzegovina, has birthed in law, and we would be happy to discuss that with you. Thanks a lot.
Now Professor Riley, please.
Thank you. I mean, I don't really have many more questions, and I think perhaps the best situation now is that if, I would recommend, Mr. President, that we contemplate a German whereby the advisory committee can consider these procedural issues further. I think that's where I recommend we go now.
You mean an interruption? Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes. So therefore, I will interrupt this public hearing. The members of the advisory committee will have some deliberations, will come back to you and in about 30 minutes.
Thank you kindly.
so we will continue with this public hearing. The advisory committee took the following procedural decisions. The first is that we'll ask the secretariat to send to the advisory committee the Copenhagen report, and also if it already exists or at the moment it exists, also the OXXERA report. Second, we will continue this public hearing on the 6th of November at 10:00 a.m. So we will have a German at this stage. We will not close this public hearing, but we will continue this public hearing in due time on the 6th of November at 10:00 a.m. These are the procedural decisions of the advisory committee. I give you now the possibility just to briefly comment on this. Mr. Gasic?
Thank you kindly, resident member of the advisory committee. We fully acknowledge and are grateful for your deliberation. We would kindly request that, if it's possible, just in terms of our rights of defense, that once the OXXERA report is available, it is also shared with the defense so that we can get acquainted with it and be ready for the continued hearing.
Of course, if this report is available, it has to be sent not only to the members of the advisory committee, but also to the contracting parties.
Thank you kindly.
Dr. Buschle, do you want also a comment?
Thank you very much for announcing this decision, which we're evidently happy to follow. I would just like to recall for the record, the procedure in this case is one of submitting a reasoned request and also a reply. There has been no reply by Bosnia and Herzegovina. I think that's important to recall, but we understand that for practical reasons, the advisory committee would like to acquaint itself with the economic reports that have and will be conducted and delivered in the meantime. So since the last procedural documents were sent to you by way of the reasoned request of the secretariat, and I would also kindly request council of the, of Elektrobrivuda and maybe also of Bosnia and Herzegovina to abstain from trying to interfere in these proceedings by sending procedural requests and putting institutions and persons which are not part of these proceedings in copy. I think this is absolutely not appropriate. And also to be recalled that arguments made there, additional arguments should have also been made by, within the deadline, set by the procedural rules, that is within or by a reply, and if not, they are forfeited. Thank you.
Thank you kindly, Honorable President. I also extend thanks to the secretariat for their comments. I would just like to briefly reflect. Of course, we thoroughly and strongly disagree with the secretariat's views in both facts and law, be it formal or substantive. We also showed due respect to the procedural rules of the secretariat. However, I would like to once again underline that that's only a secondary source of law. The Aki trumps the rules, and it will always trump the rules. Bosnia is an exceeding country. We have not, this is a public hearing, and in terms of transparency, we copied in the European Commission, not some random third party, and we copied in DG Competition, A5, the unit in charge of international relations, and DG NEAR, the unit in charge of Bosnia, who are under the association agreement, the only ones in charge to observe Bosnia's compliance with the Aki. And we have full respect for transparency of these proceedings. We do not see how transparency can in any way endanger the fairness of this investigation, quite the opposite. Thank you.
If I may just, Mr. President, I may just briefly, in two sentences, respond to that. First of all, we're talking here not about the secretariat's rules. These are the energy community rules. The European Union, of which the European Commission is an institution, is a member to, and a party to, the energy community, and we're not discussing here any laws of the association agreements, but the laws of the energy community. And I would just kindly ask the council of Elektrobrivuda to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have to apologize, Mr. President, he has technical problems and he can, he cannot be with us anymore. It's a problem with his computer in this moment, so that he, he phoned to me and asked me to close the hearing, as it was said already, so that the hearing is actually interrupted and we are going to continue on the 6th of October. And we have noticed all your comments, also after our, also after the decisions of the advisory committee. So thank you so much and have a nice day and stay healthy. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you and bye.